Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any citizens' statements or petitions? Harry, now I don't believe we have any correspondence. So the next issue is an update from area Cardy. I don't know if you want to update us, David, on your...
I haven't really had any conversations with Mary since the last interviews. So my understanding is that the profile had been posted on MMA and closing date, I believe, was April 19th for new applicants.
Okay, I don't, I don't think it's been posted yet. I think she was waiting until, she's gonna wait until after this meeting because she sent it all to all of us.
Somebody told me they saw it posted sometime. Maybe they left it out. I didn't see it myself. Someone told me it had been posted.
All right, well, you know what? Why don't we, why don't we talk about the key fund policy?
All right, we got a draft, the final draft, I guess, of that.
Okay, she just gave me the thumbs up, so I think she'll, Mary will be logging on. I just had a second. If nothing else, just pass that down. Sure. So do you want to just go through this with us while we're waiting for Mary?
Other than the changes Jason had made or said we should make, there was a question about charging for lost fobs, and I was told we can't do that. My thought was if it's a digital problem, that person probably shouldn't have a fob. They are continually losing it. But other than that, it specifies, you know, all of the the things that we wanted to in terms of who gets it, who gets the fobs, what time the building is open, that the fob shouldn't be shared. And if, you know, if there's an instance where it's a group or committee that needs to get into the building, we can lend them a fob, sign it out, and then get it back. It's pretty straightforward.
Does anybody have any questions? You're going to get a motion to approve it.
I would like to make a motion to approve the new town hall building fob policy as written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Did Dan give you your fobs?
Yes.
Yeah, Dan just dropped them off.
I got mine today, so.
Hi, Mary. Thank you very much. Oh, you're muted.
We don't have, she muted or we muted.
I don't think, do we have the volume turned up or is she...
She has got a mute on her mic.
Oh, she's got, she's muted somehow.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's very rare I cannot be heard. Just ask my family.
So, so we have two, two issues. Just looking for an update on, you know, the contracted permanent town administrator search and then also your thoughts on this, on these two candidates and the, and the appointing a new intern to take David's place. So first, can you give us an update? Maybe somebody, we might have some questions.
All right, great. So an update of where we are, that I think you're at the point of, you have, you have a decision point. You can either re-advertise now or you can have an interim stay longer and re-advertise later. You know, we're with you till it's done. It's probably the curse or the blessing of the Collins Center wanting to get things right. And, you know, so I think it might be a good time to re-advertise now. We can try it. I think that you may be tired of, and notwithstanding the excellent candidates you have to interview tonight, you know, having an interim for too long is a little disruptive to the staff. So I would recommend let's advertise, you know, the end of this week, the beginning of next week. I think we got good candidates the last time. It happened to not, you know, get settled with a candidate, but I think that it's worth a try. Another alternative is to try to engage a longer term interim and see where we are in the fall. I think that's a decision point that you all can make, and it doesn't need to be made in this moment. I think you do the interviews tonight and deliberate on, on what you think. I think, I, I actually think it's worth a try to post again. I think if you wait to the fall, you know, then you're dealing with getting into another holiday season and another budget season. So I think your budget is in pretty, you know, your current interim has done a fabulous job. And I think looking for a three-month interim, I would shorten the application deadline because it really will be some direct recruiting efforts. I have heard from a few people already who are interested in applying, one from the previous search. And everybody is welcome to apply. So we, you know, encourage that. So I would recommend, it hurts nothing by trying to advertise again. You have a great screening committee who is dedicated, and I think their process is strong. And I would say go forward with that. I actually wouldn't change the profile at all. You had, we had adjusted the compensation a little bit when we re-advertised. But again, we advertised before the first of the year. People are in new situations now. People who have either saying they're leaving jobs in July. So I think it's worth going forward now. We have the profile ready to go if that's what you want. And then I think we're in good shape. I think that you have, I was able to reach out pretty quickly to a handful of people who do interim work this weekend. So it really has fallen out nicely. I heard back from two who are tied up right now, and that's the case. There's a, a very strong pool of interims out there. So you're not going to go wrong with anybody that you're interviewing. So that's kind of my update.
Okay. Sure, Mike.
Thank you, Carter. Go ahead. Mary, just a question. When you're thinking about, I think you've touched on this, but if we go back out now, one thing I would ask is to engage the screening committee. Because I'm assuming that we had three candidates put forward to the board for interviews. I'm assuming there are some other candidates that, that were discussed within the screening committee that didn't make the cut. But if there's any of those candidates are worthy of a discussion, I would ask the screening committee to see if they have any interest in, you know, revisiting past candidates.
Sure, we will absolutely do that. I will tell you the work of the screening committee was fairly clear. If they thought somebody was equal to the others, they would have moved them forward. But as I mentioned, anybody who is interested will be considered and reviewed by the screening committee.
Well, I can say that I looked at the profile and I don't feel it needs to be changed. I'd like to get it done sooner than later and get the process started to re-advertise and to see if we can get this wrapped up quickly.
I'd like to be done in May.
Is that something we have to vote on or are we considering?
No, I don't think we have to vote, only because we have a contract, Mary's saying that now. And if anybody was to, to have an objection, I think we would. But if it's a consensus of the committee to just continue, then we'll just go through that.
Yeah, I think, I think the timing makes sense to me to go earlier rather than waiting for the fall. So as Mary points out, moving towards holiday crunch time and then budget season. So it does seem like you're, that often summer is when people are looking to change jobs and possibly move. So it seems like a good, good timeline.
Lines up with a lot of ends of contracts, too.
Right, right.
That's a big issue.
So, yeah, I agree.
All right. Well, if no one has anything else, I'm going to invite our first candidate to come up in the interview.
Sounds good.
Greg, Greg Baliconis?
Greg Baliconis.
Baliconis.
Yes.
Please, sir. I'm Mike Morale. I'm the chair. Please come up, take a seat.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming. You as well. Please take a seat.
Evening.
Evening. I know Mary just told us that, you know, she reached out to you over the weekend. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So I don't know if you, how much of the background she told you, but we had our previous town administrator leave, leave in, in June, and then Dave, Dave Demage stepped up and has been the, the interim in the meantime. We extended it three months, and he has a hard stop. So we're, we're looking to probably replace, replace him for at least the next three months. The goal is three months, especially right now. It's kind of a, you know, this, this is the time of year with town meeting, and then it's the end of the year and a couple of other moving parts. So what I was hoping is we could start with you, just kind of introducing yourself, and then we have a few questions.
Sure. First of all, good evening, board members. My name is Greg Baliconis. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invitation. A little bit of background of me. I'm a resident in Milford, so less than 15 minutes door to door. I've been a professional town manager throughout my career. So for 36 years, I've worked in the field in Massachusetts in communities comparable to this community. I retired back in 2019 from the town of Dudley. And at that point, I've had three interim positions, the most recent one ending in December of 2023. It was an eight-and-a-half-month term in the town of Barry. Beautiful town. Reminds me very much of this, and demographically, it's quite similar to this. It was an hour and 15 minutes one way. So you can understand my interest in this position with the fact that it's a short-term duration, three to four months, and the fact that the distance is quite close. So I was, I was in Barry for eight-and-a-half months, and I feel as though we made a lot of significant accomplishments when I was there. And I can talk a little bit more about them as we go on, but let me, let me move on in terms of what my experience is. That was in 2023. In 2022, I worked as the interim town administrator in the town of Webster. A little bit bigger town than this, bigger problems, bigger issues. But bigger isn't necessarily tougher because bigger towns have a lot more staff. And you become more of a delegator than you are as a person who's roll up your sleeves and do the job. And I realize this position is when you got to roll up your sleeves and do the job. So I was in Webster for, for six months, had a productive tenure that was there when I was there. Webster and Dudley are two sister towns. They work very closely together. They share a lot of regional programs. I had a lot of familiarity with the board members and the staff that was there. So it was a fairly easy transition for me to kind of step into that position. And it ended when they appointed a full-time town administrator. Prior to that, in 2021, I was the acting town administrator in town of Blackstone. So I drove by your town hall twice a day on my way back and forth to the lovely town of Blackstone. It was, it was a challenging position, but it was, it was productive. I felt as though there was significant progress that was made when I was there. I enjoyed it tremendously. It was my first opportunity working as an interim. And it was right on the heels of the COVID pandemics, or the lot of things we needed to catch up on and a lot of things needed to be done. And so I ended up, was there for seven and a half months, ending in July of 2021. And then previous to that, I worked for the US Census Bureau, so it was part of Census 2020. I originally started off as a, a field numerator. I did some advanced work before the 2020 census. I did some work in your community. Kind of that north end of town, Northern Avenue, North Bridge Road and some of the new developments off of there. I was looking for new developments, new neighborhoods, new houses. It was my job to kind of note those and begin listing those. And then after that field work was done, I was a supervisor for the Census Department. So I had 20, 21 enumerators who worked for me who were out in the field trying to chase down people who ignored the census reports. And went kind of quickly. It was kind of fun. It was something I wanted to do when I left my career. It was something I always had my eye on. I was kind of said, I want to work with the Census Bureau. It was hard work, but it was fun. And then 36 years before that, I worked as a full-time town administrator. So I retired from Dudley. I was there for five years. Similar, similar community, I think, to this, although I think that there's probably a little more wealth in this community. And this community has a little bit more of a rural feel than Dudley has, but it was a college town. It was a fun place to work. I spent my whole career kind of working in and around Metro West and suburban Boston. It was kind of nice to come up to Worcester County and see that there's some fresh air and the people were kind of nice. And I was there for a period of five years, ending in, with my retirement in 2019. Dudley always was struggling financially, not because of anything that I did as the town administrator. There just a tax base was very weak. There wasn't a lot of value in property, and there wasn't an opportunity to really raise the revenues that were necessary for both the town and the schools. So it was always a struggle to try to work along those, those, those departments. And then prior to that, I was the town administrator in North Reading, just north of Boston, enough in 93 if you've ever been there. Beautiful town, but pretty intense. It was a charter position with a lot of authority, a lot of appointing authority. And I was there for a period of nine years. And it was, it was a great place to be, but it was, again, one of those really long rides, 50 miles one way, so back and forth. So, and then you see my resume. I've worked in a number of other towns in this area, in and around Massachusetts. Like I said, I've spent my whole career kind of working in this field and feel lucky that I'm retired and I have something to offer communities.
We, we're proposing to build a pretty large senior center here at the corner. And there's going to be a, a debt exclusion, you know, we're going to deal with at the town meeting. And a ballot vote. Can you tell us, have you had any experience dealing with that kind of an issue within any of the communities? Or when's the last time you did?
Yeah. So, so when I was in Dudley, we, we had a similar project with a fire station. So there's a new fire station that needed to be built. The first effort that went to ballot failed. The project was considered by taxpayers to be too rich. And they also didn't like the fact, the location, the residents didn't like the location, which was similar to how you have your police station right next to town hall. That's what we envisioned for the fire station, but the public said, no, they didn't like it. So we, the administration and the board, went back to the drawing board and pared back $2 million on the project, found another location that was suitable for it, and then went ahead and brought it to ballot. It did pass the debt exclusion. We went through and hired a construction management firm to, to deal with the project. And I was a member of the building committee. So in terms of the day-to-day and the weekly ins and outs of what was going on, I was kind of the point person. If there was a crisis that came up, the construction management team got in touch with me, and we dealt with issues. In terms of the, the financing of it, it was pretty straightforward. It was done in the form of debt exclusion. The, the debt didn't, it was temporary borrowings, and debt didn't hit the, the books, so to speak, the permanent borrowing until the project was completed. But it went well. It was smooth. We had weekly progress meetings with the construction, with the contractor. It was a CM at-risk project, if you know what those are, and I thought it went very smoothly. When I was in, when I was in North Reading, we had a huge high school project, and that's a little bit out of the timeframe in terms of we're looking at relevancy. But it was a 70 to $100 million project. And it was, building a school was a little bit more of a challenge than building a fire station or a senior center because you have to go through the MSBA, different regulations. But I have experience in those areas.
I guess the question, when it failed the first time, you said it was because of the location?
Location and cost.
And you trimmed $2 million off of how much of a...
So it was a, it was a $9 million project that became a $7 million project.
That was how many years?
What's that?
What year?
2018. 2018, I'd say the, the first ballot vote probably was 2017. It came back. It failed. It was brought back to the ballot. I believe that it was brought back as part of a bigger ballot. It wasn't a special election. There was some discussion about the merits of doing a special election versus having it being part of a larger race to bring out a larger group of the population. It turned out that was a good decision.
And if I ask one more before, I just, we've, we've had some success reaching out on the federal, on the state, but now the federal level with, with the earmark process. And we heard from Senator Markey, and we've actually heard from our congressman, Jake Oshinclaus's staffer. And we've, we're, we're actually in, in the hunt for that.
Wow.
Do you have any experience with federal earmarks or state earmarks?
Yeah, so we were, we were promised that there would be some earmarking money available for the fire station project in Dudley. It turned out that we were promised, but it never came to, to fruition. We were, we were, we were encouraged to go ahead and apply, and it never, it never really reached the point where... And it was, there were a lot of promises made, but at the end of the day, it was the town's responsibility to construct the project. No one came through for us.
Hoping for a happier ending.
Yeah, but I, I want to be honest. You know what I'm saying? There's no, the project got done. So the, the bottom line is the project got done on time, under budget, and everyone was happy.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think, yeah. Yeah, so I guess I was just wondering about your approach coming in as an interim, how you work with department heads. So, you know, it's been, there've been transitions over the last year. So what's your approach to coming in and working with people?
I think that's a great question. I like to meet people. I'm kind of like a face-to-face person. I like email and I like telephone, but I would want to meet with people face-to-face and find a little bit about what challenges and opportunities they face as a department and see if there's any common threads that are in there. So my approach is to come in, be, listen and, and hear what people have to say. See whether there's some commonality and what their thought process is. These are the people who've been here longest. I haven't been here for all that, I wouldn't have been here for all that long of a period of time. But I, I like to work collaboratively with, with the group, and I feel as though I have a very calm demeanor in terms of how I approach problem solving. And I don't, don't want to come across in any way of being a know-it-all or a threat. But when it comes time to make a decision, I can be decisive and I can be collaborative. But you get to kind of come in and, and you don't have much time to kind of find your way around. And I think it's important that if I were to get this job, I'd need to have a conversation with the board about what you consider the priorities for this position to be, because it's very short time. And it's very hard as an interim to kind of come in and find your own way. So I would lean on the, the board and respectfully ask you to tell me what you think the top two or three priorities or should be spending my time, and then go from there.
That's a similar question, more on the time, like coming in as an interim. What sort of timeframe you're starting to touch on it, do you see, do you think it would take to assimilate and actually get your feet under you and move and start working? So...
Right away. I don't, I don't need...
When you're assimilated?
I don't, I don't see, I don't see any, I don't see any, I don't see any real lengthy break-in period. I mean, I looked at your, your finances. I looked at your bylaws. I looked at the Department of Revenue Financial Management Report. These things are familiar to me in other communities that I have worked in. So other than knowing the personalities and really knowing what the board's goals and priorities are, those are the missing pieces that I'd need to be brought up to speed on and have an idea. And given the fact that I'm a part-time interim person, I like to use the expression, you have to be a little bit of a triage manager. So you've got to kind of concentrate on those things. Your time and your ability and your knowledge is going to result in the greatest progress for the town and not waste my time with the stuff on either side. You're welcome.
You answered that question the same way David answered that question right before we hired David. So I really appreciate it, and I don't now have any more questions. I wanted to just point that out. It was something that David said when he came in. I don't, what do I need? Like, I'm going to come in here and do my job. And he was very confident and very jovial. And so, yeah, that's what we're looking for. So I guess I'm done with my question. Just want to make a statement.
Thank you.
My questions were actually already asked. I, I can tell you that the, you know, the priorities, obviously, I say obvious, but the priority is that, you know, we have a town meeting. I think it's May 3rd, so we need to have, you know, all of our ducks in a row. Very important to do that, make sure the budget squared away. We have a finance director who's been handling the budget. But if for some reason, would you be able to step in and help walk through that the same way David has been, had been dealing with?
So, so you're one step up on Barry. Barry didn't have a finance director. So that responsibility, the creation of the budget document was my responsibility. And I could tell you, I hadn't done that in a long time. And I really wanted to go back and see what it was like to go back to how I started my career. I had a desire to want to do that. And it was, it was hard work because it was me. And, and I didn't have a finance director. I had a part-time town accountant who wasn't really around that much. And there were deadlines that needed to be met. So it was my just responsibility and my duty to kind of get the budget done and completely comfortable with the budget. I know about town meeting. I can, can work with the board in terms of creation of motions for town meeting, work with council in terms of making sure that any questions that require borrowing or legal questions have the proper verbiage. So, you know, I've, I've done those things and I'm comfortable with all of them. And I didn't even mention, one of the things that, that happened when I was in Barry was they really wanted to establish a town administrator bylaw. So they...
What was it?
A town administrator bylaw. So they had, they hadn't done that. And it was one of my, my responsibilities, in addition to all the other things I did, was I helped the board craft a bylaw. And it did, it did get approved, which was, which was really a, for many years, they went through and struggled with how they had to solve their problems with administration. And there were continual findings in the audit report that said that the town needed to move forward. They didn't really know what to do. So I assisted the board, and the board, through their leadership, got the bylaw passed through town meeting.
Well, David also has a reconstruction project that's going on here on Main Street with a historical building that was a bank and law office and a lot of different things. But he really, it was faltering, and he came in and took it over. And, and it was, has been shepherding it through. But that, again, that's another thing that maybe you can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's a relatively small project. We got a massive historical grant for $65,000. And we had some money from the CEP A and to offset that. And it's approximately $140,000. That involves repointing the building.
If you don't mind me asking, where is it?
I'm sorry?
Where is the, the building?
Oh, it's right up here on the, on the side of Main Street. I think it's...
If you go up towards, towards the traffic light?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's right on the left. It's, you can't miss it. It's the one little brick square building.
It's a tiny building.
It says records room on it.
Oh, yeah. I know the records building. I'm stuck in traffic looking at it on the left-hand side. And I, I know, I know. I always wonder what was in there.
Yeah, nothing at the moment.
Exactly.
It's just some construction, floor reconstruction. They want to put a pad in the basement. It's been a little bit of a challenge because we, we, we sort of craft, sort of crafted it through. And we now have two people involved in the process of seeing that it gets done. We're actually going to open the bids on the 28th and hopefully get a quick turnaround on that.
Whatever I could do.
Again, what we would be looking for is you to, to be here in the day-to-day, to run things along, keep, keep things moving. And so it would be up to 20 hours a week. That would be the accept, understanding. And do you, have you, what, what's your salary requirement? What's your expectation?
Yeah, so in terms of kind of what my, my history is, I was getting $90 an hour in Webster and 85 in Blackstone. So I think somewhere in the range of 85 hourly is probably a good idea. I'm close by, so, you know, hours, I'd like to have certain hours, commit to a schedule. But if I'm needed, I can always be available and come in to deal with whatever, whatever issues are coming before the board or the town.
And you wouldn't be looking for any benefits with that?
No, I wouldn't want any fringe benefits.
Can I just add?
Sure.
That's okay. Well, I was just wondering, so we're looking for short term. I think we're looking for three months. But is there flexibility? I mean, David has a hard stop in, you know, soon. So we don't know how long it's going to take us to fill the position. So I don't, do you have flexibility beyond?
Yeah, I, I have flexibility. If you, if you select me, you won't need anyone else. I'll, I'll stay here for the duration. When I was in Blackstone, the, the board hired somebody, but the person had to give a month's notice and had to negotiate a contract. And next thing you know, it was six weeks from the time that the board made a decision that they wanted this person, till that person could actually come on board. And it was in July. It was the nicest time of year, and I was there.
I just want to add on to that, actually. And David, one of the things he's also doing for us that we haven't brought up yet is he's a member of the selection committee. I don't, what was, did you, did you do that when you were an interim in other towns? Where did you, you know, sit on the selection board and help with the selection of the next member? Or was that something that's uncomfortable for you? Are you willing to take David's spot on? Are you willing to take David's spot on our selection board if we hire you?
So, um, in Blackstone and in Barry, they, they didn't have a selection committee. They utilize the services of consultant to do the screening of applicants. And I worked, um, with the consultant and with the board behind the scenes. Uh, I feel like the real value that I had was when the board made a decision to hire somebody, they didn't really know where to go in terms of the contract. And I was able to, to, uh, work and assist the board in hammering out a contract that was agreeable to both parties. And, and so I'm quite comfortable in that role. I'd be quite comfortable in being on the, the public committee. If that was the desire of the board, then, then so be it, I'll be there.
Do you have any other questions? All right, well, thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming by.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, to be interviewed. Um, do you know when the board will be making a decision?
Possibly tonight, but certainly within the next few days.
Okay. Thank you very much for the interview. I appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Do you still hear my exit going down the crease?
That's our, that's our early warning.
Guys coming up the stairs and I'm like crying.
I, I do, I, I, I will just, uh, say that I, I believe David, I think you were somewhere between 70 and 75 an hour, right? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that negotiable?
Yeah, um, it is, but I also know that you're not that much different than a town like a Blackstone. You know, yeah, well.
We're just thinking about having a conversation. Evan, okay, great.
You're, you're, remember, you're, you're less than 15 minutes away. It saves me on gas, which is a huge issue. Thank you again.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, until our next candidate shows up, why don't we move into your town administrator update?
I really don't have anything at this point.
You don't?
Other than, you know, I was going to talk about the, here, the earmark grants is.
Well, we actually have, well, we have it on here, discuss congressional and senate earmark grants, so.
Yeah, originally that was going to be part of my report.
Well, why don't we, it's on, it's on as a separate item.
I see Jack on, want to jump through ARPA real quick?
Um, if we have it, sure, if you think you have it, sure, why don't we do that? That's great, Jack's here, thanks.
I'm here.
It's really, I think, to get, understand from Jack's perspective, what sort of funding they're looking for.
Yeah, well, I know, I was going to ask you about that. I just figured it would take more time, but we can start and finish, but. Hi, Jack, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you guys? And, um, I guess my only input is, believe it or not, you know, I had to jog my memory, but I, you know, I've been here since September of 21 and I don't remember when ARPA came into play, but the previous permanent town administrator, for good or bad, literally committed every dollar of ARPA money to the water project. Now, this was before we started the, well, maybe we had just started the water project. This is before we knew we're getting three E-mark earmarks. This was before we knew we were going to be awarded three grants. And I don't have to give you an update on the water project, but it's taken a life of its own and, and, um, we've been very, very fortunate. Um, then, it might've been right before Kim left, I can't remember, Mike might be able to remember, but, um, we were, um, negotiating a revised contract with Woodward and Curran and we committed, meaning the town, about $82,000 of ARPA funds for the current contract we're in today. And they are ready to invoice, um, that if they haven't already, uh, because this contract's starting to wind down and then we have one more year of monies, which I want to talk about. Having talked to Woodward and Curran about, um, phase, well, it's probably three.
Yeah.
Um, which would be the next contract, they are looking for about $100,000 to add on to the grant we have for 100,000 in the earmark to get the final, well, not the final, nothing's final, but the, the next phase done, which is the real, um, very intricate testing of the well and designing the system in, in, at least conceptually, putting all the financial numbers together, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'm just making the case, um, that the were, there, there is an obligation for about 82,000 that you're on now.
We've already.
And that they are requesting, they said between 75 and 100,000 for the next contract extension.
So what's the total that they, they think they're going to need for this phase three? 200,000?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, Mike.
Yeah, Jack, the, the last meeting with the email, with an email, I think that David had sent to us indicated 82,000 plus additional 75 to 100. So we've kind of parked 182,000 from ARPA funds that are just sort of earmarked towards water. The question would be now, is there any additional monies you can see within the next 12 months?
No, because you need to have the ARPA funds under contract by December 31st. So we do not, um, anticipate any more need for the ARPA funds other than the additional 100,000.
Okay. So we sort of, we, we parked that when we saw the email. We just, as the board, have not allocated officially. Right, but Mike, again, my question is, we've, you know, and, and we did reach out to, um, to Brian Murray and I asked him to, to earmark, uh, ask for 100,000 earmark for, um, for water. Which he told me he is, he, he just did or he's about to sit down with them.
Yeah, and, and in addition, um, I'm applying for another one-stop grant, which would be our fourth one for the water project. And this would be what I would call phase four, which I do not have a scope yet, I don't even know, but that money's, um, if obtained, if we're awarded the one-stop and if we're, God bless us, if we can get an earmark, then we go off into phase four. But we're not asking for ARPA monies because that'll be after December 31st.
Jack, is phase four, that's post, that's beginning of engineering, right? Like.
Well, no, no, we're in engineering.
To be finishing.
Preliminary, preliminary. Right now, we're trying to find out exactly what the water quality is. Preliminary findings are very positive. We have to de, uh, drill a couple more wells pursuant to D E P. Um, they want to start, in pursuant to the quality of the water, they want to start designing a water treatment plant. And there's a whole host of philosophies behind, and I've done this before, about how you treat the water. And this is, I'm assuming there's, there's iron and manganese and how you treat the iron and manganese. And it's, uh, uh, something I think that we're all going to have to wrestle with because they all come with a price tag.
But I, I just want to, I, I just want to be clear that the 82,000 is the, is for the invoice now, that's coming now, what's already been done.
Right.
We already earmarked, we earmarked or segregated 100,000 additional ARPA money for the upcoming, uh, project, you know, to start.
The phase three.
For phase three.
To add to their.
But in addition to that, uh, you talk about an, you know, a, a state earmark. My understanding is what Brian is working on right now is that earmark for phase three. So are you?
Oh.
All right, so I, I don't, we don't have a commitment for, an earmark for phase three right now.
Oh, I assumed it was for phase four, Mike, but hey, we can always.
Maybe I'm, I, maybe I'm wrong if I'm asking, I mean, but as far as I know, the way the process works, you know, we're in, we're in March talking about, you know, beginning July 1st. So that's my, because, because wrapping up, because this is an election year, so they're wrapping up.
I thought it was this one as well.
Yeah.
So maybe we can tag that into the phase three. There's plenty to do, uh, you know, we're nickel and di, not nickel and diming it, but we're inching away as we get money.
Right, and if, if we're going to even move forward with a phase three, right?
Right.
Yeah. So I think, Jack, we keep the, uh, keep the communication open because we still actually have additional ARPA funds available to us outside of what the 182 we've already sort of parked for water.
Yep.
So if there's a phase four matching grant type of deal that's coming to fruition in the fall, we might want to allocate, I mean, before December 31st, things like that.
I will get that message to Woodward and Curran and I will make sure Dave and his successor and you guys are up to speed on this.
Thank you.
That's my ARPA story. I, I don't know anything else.
It's a good one, Jack. Thanks. Welcome. Ryan?
Yes.
Hi. I'm Mike Morale. Mr. Vichy, time to take a seat, please. We appreciate you, um, taking the time to come speak to us. I know that, uh, Mary Accardi spoke to you over the weekend. You know, we had a, uh, our previous town administrator left to the, for the, for the town of, um, of Orleans back in June. And, uh, Dave Demage had, had been chosen as our interim and he was here for what was supposed to be six months, turned into, up to six, turned into really nine. And now he's got a hard stop at the end of the month and we're, uh, still in the search. So we, we're hoping that, uh, we'll have this finished up in another three months, but we need somebody to, to fill in particularly this time of year because, you know, we're working into, um, town meeting in May and then end of year. And we're also got a couple of projects going on too. So, uh, that, that's why we're looking to, to replace our interim with another. So if you could introduce yourself to us and tell us a little bit of your background, that'd be great.
Sure. Uh, my name's Ryan McNutt and, uh, I've, uh, been a town administrator and a town manager here in Massachusetts for the past, uh, 10, 12 years. I most recently was the town manager in Palmer. I, um, you know, uh, ran into some, uh, the, there were some changes on their town council and I ran into some, some challenges, uh, and, and chose to, uh, take a severance and move on. Uh, so now I'm available. I'm, I'm a manager in transition, as the MMA calls it. And, uh, Mary reached out to me and, uh, presented this opportunity. This actually aligns with, um, some stuff that I have going on right now, um, so the, the timeline works out for me. And, um, happy to, uh, understand, uh, how I can help you guys in the next three months, the projects that you have going on. I, I have a lot of experience with municipal projects.
Okay, if, um, and one of the questions that, that we asked, um, and I'll ask you the same thing, when, um, whenever we have somebody's name, we usually Google them. If we did that, what, what will we come up with you? Any, anything that, that you know that might be there that we might have to look into and what's your, what's your explanation about it?
Sure. Um, so the way that Google works, right? I think it's like the most negative stuff about you is always the, the top search. So you're going to see that, um, uh, I was terminated in New Hampshire. Uh, my contract was terminated. I wasn't terminated for cause or anything like that. Again, they, uh, paid me, uh, you know, a fair amount of money. Again, it was, it was a political difference, the way that the structure in New Hampshire, uh, is set up, um, kind of worked against me. And, and then the resignation in Palmer. Uh, again, you know, not, not, not anything for cause, that was my choice to leave Palmer. But I, I can't think of anything else. I think that's, that's largely all you would find.
Okay. We have a project that we're working on. We're looking to build a new senior center. And, you know, we've got issues with ballot, a ballot question, uh, issues at town meeting, financing, uh, we're working with state and with, with actually the federal government for earmarks. Do you have any experience with any of that? Maybe you can tell us about that or if you've ever worked a project like that within your municipal experience?
Yeah, I, I have. Um, I've done, well, I've worked in communities that already had senior center projects ongoing and I inherited those and like finished the project. I think, uh, and I have a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, but I think based upon what you just told me, it aligns with my experience at my very first town meeting when I became town administrator in Lancaster, Massachusetts.
Very similar to this place.
Yeah, very similar community, correct? Yeah, population size and, and, you know, makeup. So, uh, they had a beautiful town hall campus, right? All the buildings were on the same campus and they had a Bull Finch Church and a library, a, a town hall, and then a former middle school that was empty. And they had space needs issues in town hall and they wanted to move many of the offices over into the middle school. And so that was planned, you know, uh, prior to me becoming the town administrator, um, they had actually gone through, um, the estimating process of what it would estimate to, to rehab the, the middle school. And it was about, uh, three point something million dollars, I think I was told. But they had problems at their town meeting with the ballot and the vote. And it ended up, the, um, approval, the warrant approval for that line I'm at, at town meeting ended up being voided because they didn't, you know, it's like a magic spell and they, they didn't do the magic spell the right way. So it cancels the whole thing out. And so I become town administrator, it's two years later. So I, I worked to resolve all the administrative challenges and get them in a right place where the warrant would be accurate for the upcoming town meeting. Inflation had increased the project by about another 1.2 million dollars.
And what was the original amount?
I, I mean, this is a, a fair amount of time, but it was, it was three some, it was three something million and the project ended up at about four and a half million, which in today's prices would be like 12 million. But, so at my very first town meeting, I had to make sure that this was done right. I mean, the, the town would not accept failure twice in a row, uh, and ask them for more money, million, a mil, over a million dollars. So, um, the, the biggest lesson I learned from that, um, I mean, it's always going to be what it is when you ask town meeting for more money, but I learned how incredibly important the administrative part to the warrant is. And how there's, you know, there's, can be something that if the town clerk doesn't do it right, it'll be voided and then it has to go to the state level for approval. And, uh, if they don't see something as kosher, it will have to be redone.
Exactly, part of what our concern is to make sure that we do everything right. But I just, speaking of doing everything right, um, thanks, thanks Brendan. When this, when this warrant was posted, there's a gentleman named Michael Gallagher who was supposed to be our second candidate and he had withdrawn. So I'm just making the, uh, kind of substitution, kind of like the beginning of the ballgame. Actually, uh, Mr., Mr. Ryan McNutt had, uh, come forward, actually through the same screening process with, um, with the Collins Center and had stepped up, um, and, and he was, he was the third one that turned out to be available. So that's why the name on the, uh, on the agenda was actually Michael Gallagher. But now, uh, that you're here speaking with us because this other gentleman had, um, not been available and we didn't have you when we posted the warrant. So this was just a recent change, but I just want to make sure that we make that announcement so everybody's aware. So back to, uh, back to where, does anybody else have any questions for this, uh, for this candidate?
So, uh, as an interim, so you've been an interim before, like an interim town administrator?
I've not been in interim. I've, I've actually just been a town administrator.
Well, so then, imagining yourself coming in as an interim, what, how do you see, uh, like what would your plans be for working with department heads and coming in and working with, um, the staff who've been going through a lot of transitions this year? So do you, do you, can you imagine a plan for coming in to that situation?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, everybody's going to know that I'm an interim. In many cases, you know, especially if you don't expect the interim to apply for the permanent position, I, I think that in my experience has ma, made folks comfortable. I mean, there's going to be some folks that have long-term goals and, and they might be a little unsettled, you know, um, you know, is everything going to stop until the? you know, is everything gonna stop until the permanent town administrator gets hired? So you want to reassure those people that, you know, I can continue to do the job, and if you have something that's ongoing, I will continue to help you, you know, bring it to where it has to go. And then for other folks, you know, they understand that it's a short-term thing, and I just will meet with them and understand what they have going on, and then just try to reassure them by working with them the experiences that I have. I've probably worked on many of the projects that they're currently doing, and that I can be a source of knowledge and a force multiplier to their efforts.
Okay, thank you.
We have a finance director who's working on the budget right now, but David has been also working with that, with the finance director. So what's your experience with creating the budget, working the budget, and getting it through a town meeting?
Yeah. I have probably every experience that you can have under every form of government in Massachusetts. I started out as the chief of staff to an elected mayor. That was a hundred million dollar budget back then, with a five million dollar structural deficit in the city. So, you know, that was extreme zero-based budgeting. Nothing was sacred, including shutting off the streetlights, closing a full-time library, so making really tough decisions. There I became a town administrator in Lancaster, much more typical, probably typical to this experience where you have either an appointed or elected finance committee, and the town administrator is more of an agent to various boards, primarily the select board, and working with that finance committee and the other boards and commissions and department heads to shape a budget, where you have influence, but you're not the sole voice. From there, I became a city manager, and most recently I was a town manager, and it was my responsibility as the CEO to put together the entire budget. I had a finance team to work with, and I did, but it was my budget to put together, and those were both about 45 million dollar budgets. And capital, and then in the whole capital improvement plan and all the accompanying documents.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the, I just want to make sure, just want to make sure I asked the same questions as last time. So one of the other things that David's doing for us and doing a great job at is being a member of our selection committee. So is that something you'd be comfortable with? Would you be able to sit on the select, the selection committee for our next town administrator? You had mentioned just real quickly before, is your intent to continue to be an interim administrator with us until we're ready to move on, or was, are you interested in the other position? You just mentioned it really quickly, so I don't know if that's your intent, but this is a position that David handles for us, and it's been super useful to have sort of a member of the board on the committee, you know?
If the select board would like me to be on the selection committee, I'm more than happy to serve on the selection committee. I have advised other communities when they were selecting not town administrators, but I've been involved in five police chief searches, multiple fire chief searches, finance director searches, treasurer searches. So I have experience sitting on these panels, and if that's something that the select board would like the interim to do, more than comfortable to do it.
Sure, Mike, go ahead.
And this can't be the same question, because I see it on your resume, but I'm just kind of curious. What was the objective and the results associated with increasing social media and town marketing presence? You have increased social media and town marketing presence. So what was the objective that set you off down that path, and then what were the results of the efforts that you put out there?
So, well, there were a couple of things that set me down the path. I mean, I presume we're talking about Palmer.
Yes.
Yeah. So Palmer is a unique place, if you guys are unfamiliar with it. It's a town called Palmer, but it's really four different villages. These villages have their own post office, they have their own separate fire departments, so there's three fire departments, four water districts. If somebody lives in the village of Bonsville, they might not utter the word Palmer ever utter in their life. They consider themselves a resident of Bonsville. So there's a lot of sort of parochialism and rumor and innuendo and a little bit of village rivalry. And so I'd be attending a meeting of, you know, important folks in town, and different people would come up to me, and they would say stuff, and then I would go try to verify it, and it would be like they said there was a ghost in the room. There just was nothing to what they were saying. And so myself and the town planner and the economic development director got together and were like, it's very hard to propose things in town because people have these, in a sense, false memories of things that they thought were gonna come in, and they didn't, and they blame so-and-so for why it didn't, but it was never a real thing to begin with. So increasing the communication with the public was about trying to dispel a lot of those rumors. And the pre, my predecessor had not really done anything with social media, hadn't really done anything except for talk to, I guess, the folks who only came to see him. And that really wasn't working anymore. So it was a goal of the town council that I increase the social media presence, and then it was also recognized by me as, I need to do this because I need to get the correct information out there. Even my department heads are running into frustrations because they're working through this ether of misinformation.
Thank you. Speaking about communication, so how would you describe your communication style?
I try to be as forthright with people as possible. I'm not interested in drama, and so I just try to be direct with people.
So this position would be based on what David's done for us about 20 hours a week, or 20 hours a week? And what are your salary requirements?
It's a good question. Not having been an interim before, I had to give that some thought today, and I would be comfortable with 120 an hour.
Okay, well, David has been between 70 and 75 an hour. It was lower than that, and then increase it to that. So would you, for those three months, consider something similar, or is that out of the question for you for these three months? I'd rather bring it up right up front rather than, you know, walk away and not talk about it, so.
Right, right. I mean, you know, it's a, there's wear and tear on my car driving in. I mean, it's a fair trip. You know, some nights, you know, could be pretty late, the meeting nights, which I don't have a problem with. I mean, I guess I would have to go back and give it some thought, do the math. Sure.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. We'll be in touch soon, or Mary will be in touch. We'll work through.
Oh, okay.
Mary Accardi.
Oh, gotcha.
Reached out to you initially.
Yep.
But we'll certainly talk, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you.
So does anybody have any thoughts?
About your candidates?
Yes, because, just like, time is of the essence.
Right, so.
A leading question?
Sure.
Does everybody believe we need an interim for the next three months?
That's a good point. Let me just weigh in first, and I know you and I talked about this.
Yeah, that's why I prefer to get everyone else's opinion first.
If you feel that way, that.
No, no, I really don't.
No, I get it. No, I know what you're, but I want to say, I think you brought up a really great point about that, you know, for these three months. I just, and, you know, and actually, David and I spoke about it too, because I said, you know. But here's the issue. I think for continuity's sake, we need somebody, particularly these three months. I think this is a really critical time of year, not just up to town meeting, but also with end-of-year budgets. And in addition to that, I think with the particular year we're dealing with, with the senior center and now these earmarks and projects, I just think it's important to have somebody to run the day-to-day, not so much to make decisions, because, you know, I'm on the phone, I take more than three hours a day dealing with issues every day about this, things that normally the town administrator would take care of, but that's why he's part-time to keep things, you know, rolling along. So that's just my thought, but I'm just one member, so that's where I'm from.
Yeah. For me, I am concerned about the senior center expansion project, getting everything just right for going into town meeting and for the ballot. So I guess I'm in, that for me is central, as well as the budget questions, and I feel like there's, I mean, I think we could probably, you know, squeak by without an interim town administrator, but I do think it would be a lot of work, and I think, I worry that, I worry about something falling through the cracks because nobody will have been in that, no one will have had all of the relevant experience, even though probably a lot of things will be manageable. But I think having more experience going into this, like the next few months, I think that would be, that's important to me.
Just to follow on to what I said before, I also firmly believe that, you know, the idea of, it wouldn't be so much us, but existing staff that would have to pick up these other things. And I firmly believe that we don't have anybody sitting around eating grapes. I mean, we've got a lot of people who work very hard, and they have a lot on their plate. And the idea of putting more onto somebody who's already dealing with an issue, I think it would be better having somebody in there to walk through this, just like the last candidate just said. They had one issue where, you know, they had to go back to the state, and they had problems with the way that things went through a town meeting.
But I do think, though, that there might be an opportunity for professional development for, say, department heads or other staff members, because even with the interim, we're still talking about 20 hours a week, and as, Mike, you've said you're doing extra hours, so there might still be an opportunity.
We've been missing 20 hours a week for the last.
Right, to engage some of the other staff members to do some of those roles, and it could be a professional development opportunity for them, as well as potentially help us down the road. I mean, the hope is we're going to have, you know, a permanent town administrator soon, but, you know, there is that possibility that things could fall through again, that there could be another change. And so like, I, so to your point, I do think that it would, there are people who, you know, are already employed by the town that could potentially do some of the roles, and so, you know, but I feel like it's, it's a tough time right now when there's so much on the line. I mean, to take on, like all of it.
I'm kind of right there with you in terms of sentiments.
I don't know if it's appropriate from the open town meeting, but I'd like to make a comment. Maybe when you're done, throw up your own, I don't want to break protocol.
Yeah, we're deliberating right now, so, thanks.
Yeah, I don't have anything to disagree with. I would hate to lose the momentum that was gained by having David. I agree with the opportunity to fill in the missing gaps. And I thought we had a pretty solid two sets, you know, two people here tonight.
So, yeah, so before I asked for anybody to make a motion to pick one or the other, Mary, do you have any comments or any wisdom for us, any direction for us?
I am loaded with wisdom. I totally appreciate and support the idea of development and really succession planning. Municipalities really got to do more to cross-train, develop people, enable them to expand their portfolio. I honestly make the recommendation, which I tend not to do, that I think you need a captain of the ship, and not that your key departments are crew because they're part of the team, but having one focal point, which I think David has been able to do, almost like a triage or a gatekeeper. I think without that, that doesn't mean you don't give more responsibilities to other people to help develop them, whether it's in the budget, whether it's in the senior center. But I do think that gatekeeper, because you're a five-member board, are all department heads going to be equally communicating with a five-member board? I think you need that funnel to get to you. And you're not talking about 40 hours a week, you're talking about 20, maybe 25. And, you know, so I do recommend that you name an interim. I think that part of your charge to the interim is to maybe mentor some people along the way, because I think that gets to the board member's point about how are we developing people. It gets a bit challenging when you've been without a town administrator. Who's developing them? The board, five equal members? I think that if you put that charge to the interim, and I think David has risen to that role of really working with people, so I would use him as the model. And in my humble opinion, I think that it's worked well, and he'd be staying if he didn't have another obligation, and I think that that has worked well. But you can certainly give that charge to whomever you bring in to kind of say, okay, let's work on this together. But I think that gatekeeper, triage communicator to the board with one voice of this is what everyone is doing, because I can imagine it might be a little tricky if you have got, you know, eight to 14 department heads reporting to what, all five of you? Through whom? You know, so I think that's my hesitation of not naming somebody. So we do recommend you name somebody and maybe give that charge of, okay, what are we doling out to a department head to develop them and bring them into this process, because it is a team approach. I will say that the reason, and I'm going to contradict you, which is shocking to me, I will say, David was a great screening committee team member because he had been there a while. I wouldn't put one of the new, I wouldn't put the new interim on the screening committee. I can be that conduit to you. So I think you have a strong screening committee. I wouldn't drop a new person onto that. I'd rather just be down one with the screening committee than add a new voice. You can certainly do what you want, but that would be, that would be my suggestion. You've got a great screening committee, and they've kind of approached the whole process together as a team, and if we're down one member, that would be okay. Now, if David still wants to remain on the screening committee, even though his role as interim is done, that might be a possibility because it's not that many meetings. But that's all for you to decide, but I wouldn't put a new interim who doesn't know the town yet on that committee. So that's my opinion, and I'll be quiet now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So last input, David, what's your opinion about?
I would compare it, Mary, that particularly in the time of year that it is, where you do have the, you have to get the town warrant finalized, you have to get the budget finalized, and having, once again, that contact to feed everything and make sure everything is getting done properly. The questions that we had talked about in terms of financing and debt and all of that, in terms of developing those questions, I know that there was some discussion tonight about that, but most times, the override articles or capital exclusion articles are reviewed by bond counsel, our counsel, contact bond counsel. So the glitches in terms of hitting. contact bond council. So the glitches in terms of hitting a road bump there are pretty slim, as long as you take the advice of bond council, because they tell you specifically what you need to know and to put the article together. They actually put the article together. So when they take, when we take it out to bond, everybody's getting the same thing, and it's, it's legally correct in the form that it needs to be. And then you don't see those kind of things happen. But if, you know, you don't have somebody there as a person who can help coordinate that effort and move it forward, that there's a little bit of a, a, a potential to make a mistake. I think you need, you need somebody, at least for the three months, to just sort of like make sure everything gets done, you know, as a point of contact, a resource to the, the department heads, uh, you know, continue the tradition we've established now of having the department head meeting, getting people involved, listening to people, and, uh, you know, moving the process along to get a permanent town administrator.
Does anybody have, uh, have a motion, one, one that they want to recommend for us to, to make an offer to?
I mean, I did, I did like both candidates, but, um, I think that, uh, the first gentleman had, uh, experience being an interim multiple times, and I think that's a real strength, um, for what we need right now. So just the being able, that, the, uh, skill set to sort of drop, drop himself into a town and hit the ground running.
As well as having the flexibility to continue if necessary.
Yes.
So you're making a motion to appoint?
I guess, I guess I would make a motion to appoint. It's, uh, Greg Baluconis, uh, as interim administrator, uh, but I don't have, had not thought through the rate per hour, so.
Well, David, you're, you're at, uh,
Pending, I guess pending.
Negotiation. All right, well, we could, I know that, that, uh, he's at 75, so we could do up to 75 an hour, which is what he's getting.
Okay, 72 10.
Seventy-two, I'm sorry, 72 10.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I guess I could, I, right, move to appoint, uh, yeah, Greg Baluconis as interim town administrator at a rate of 72, 72 10 an hour.
Second. Do we want to make that pending contract negotiations and a background check?
I would, I would say pending negotiations and a, and a, and a Cory check, sure.
Okay, so, so amended.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, um, both of these gentlemen have passed backgrounds before. I haven't done a Cory on Mr. Baluconis recently, so I would have the town run one of those, you know, but there is no concern over his background, we've, we've done that before, so you could move quickly. Um, I would also recommend, with all due respect to David, you know, an exact dollar amount of 72 10, um, you know, you may want to say authorize, uh, you know, whoever, you know, um, it's an odd number, uh, but I, I would say, you know, subject to contract negotiations, and that might involve how many hours per week, is it extra money for a night meeting? So there might be a few things that you want to, you know, um, make subject to negotiations. I would say 75.
All right, so you're amending the motion to up to 75 pending back, uh, contract negotiations.
And a Cory check.
Not sure why we're not doing background checks. I mean, I understand they've been done somewhere, somewhere, somehow, but we do background checks for senior positions, so.
That's totally up to you.
Right. The issue, the issue is that, you know, he's got till the end of the, the end of the month, and they're known quantities.
So, I mean, you're, but I mean, you're concerned about background in addition to the Cory?
Yeah, to background check.
Okay.
I, I would tend to agree. Uh, I, I don't, the chief's not on, but, you know, how fast can we turn it around? But I'd be a lot more comfortable if we, if we did that.
If there were a background check.
Unless, unless, unless someone were to say that we actually defer to background checks done by third-party consultants in the past.
We have, we have done that.
We have that now?
Yes.
To be honest, it's been a few years, so I, I would not say I have a current background. I'm not worried about it, but to be honest with you, we've not done one in recent years. So if you feel, if you feel it's important, you should do one yourself and follow your process.
And I don't know, again, I don't know what their, what the ability of the police department is right now. Car, Caris North, would your firm had, if, if the police department doesn't have time to do it quickly in the next week, would you have the capability or not?
I would have to talk to the chief about the types of things he looks at for a background check. We can do some. I don't know if we have access, uh,
Well, he would do, I mean, clearly he would have to do a, you know, a, a Cory check, you know, a criminal check and sex offender registry, all of the, all of the things that only law enforcement have access to. But as far as going to, to talk to neighbors, going to talk to, you know, previous employers and, um, I mean, I certainly, I, I don't have an objection to it, as long as they have the time to do it. I just, we, we need to make sure that we have time to.
Yep, I can, I can certainly have someone work on that. And I do think that it is important, um, and consistent with your, your practices. And since there hasn't been one in several years, I, I would feel more comfortable if you did it.
Okay, so the motion is up to 75 dollars an hour pending negotiations and successful completion of a, of a background check?
Yes.
And just to that point, we can revisit it next week's meeting, when chief returns and Caris gets more information and then
Sure.
we could, if everything looks perfect, you know, you know, we can always amend
Right.
the timeline, right?
Yeah, I, I agree. I just, I just want to make it, I, I don't want to have a lapse, that's all. But, but you're, and again, I wasn't suggesting we wouldn't do anything. I was under the impression that there was something more recently done. But, so motion been made and seconded.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? All right, then, I'll, I'll talk to Mary, and one of us will reach out to him and start the process, so.
Mr. Chairman, I can reach out to both candidates and say what happened if they weren't listening in, and that you will be in touch.
Great.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
All right, good night, friends.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, could you, through Jennifer or to me directly, get me the application, um, material so that if needed to do background work, we can get started on that?
Yes, I'll, I'll send it to you tonight.
Thank you.
All right, take care, be well, my friend. Bye.
Thanks, Mary. All right. Let's see, the next issue is, uh, well, I'm not going to close the ATM warrant yet, because we're still talking about, like, I know, Mike, you, you had sent over the, we had valid language from Valley Tech, and then you, we, we were talking about, um, uh, something about transferring money, which was a great point. But then, when I thought about it, my memory of it and, and, uh, about, you know, the next, the last 60 days of the, of the fiscal year, so, um, I don't know, do we want to?
When the last, so this is the question was, I, I just threw out this, do we want to make sure we have, uh, money from free cash into FinCom reserves? Was the question I asked, just in case. I think both David confirmed in the last 60 days, you can move it within the budget. I just wanted to make sure we understand across department budgets, not within the same department, right? So, move.
So, so, Caris, the question that, that Mike brought up is a great one, is, you know, we had, we have free cash, over 300,000 in free cash, which, you know, normally during the process, we may appropriate some of it, you know, within the motions to pay things. But the question is, um, you know, usually in the last 60 days of the year, we would take money from FinCom Reserve, um, if it was in there, and be able to appropriate it for, you know, to, to move it around, you know, the, the, by a vote of the board. But, um, if we, we don't have a warrant article on the warrant right now to move any money into FinCom Reserve, the question is, if we have free cash that we haven't used up, you know, in the last 60 days of the year, can we, as a board, vote to move money from free cash to cover expenditures within the budget, shortfalls within the, within the different departments in the budget? Or do we need to add a warrant article, um, that moves free cash into FinCom Reserve, so we can do that if we need to?
Yeah, so, a warrant article that does that isn't only, isn't going to be useful for this fiscal year, because it's only for next fiscal year. So that's not going to be helpful. And I don't believe you can expend free cash without it being appropriated.
Well, we can, we can move, because at town meeting, you know, we can create money at the town meeting in May to move money now from free cash.
It's a separate, it's not part of the budget.
That's right, not part of the budget, it's a separate article.
Yes, if you do a budget update, yes. If you do, yes, you would have to do a separate article, so.
But my, my only question was, my understanding is that, um, if we have free cash available within the last 60 days of the fiscal year, we can apply free cash to the current year's budget, um, as long as we have a vote of the board, and, and I, I think it needs to be approved by the, by the FinCom. But I think what I'm hearing is the better thing to do is to put a placeholder on there to move money from free cash into FinCom Reserve, and then we'll come up with a number when we get
That's right.
the deadline.
Okay.
It's, it's better to appropriate it.
So you give a 37.
All right, but, all right, so that's the first thing. So let's, I'm just gonna, bear, bear with me, I'm gonna walk, walk down through this. Um, can you, do you want to, can whoever you pull it up?
Yeah.
Just so that, so rather than Caris just listening to me, we can actually put it on the screen and show everybody. And while you're doing that, I'm gonna take a break for a second.
See, it was just a ploy.
I have my own copy, don't worry.
It seems to
She's coming back to school over the weekend.
But it doesn't download.
Yeah, love it. Thank you, thank you.
That's today's date. Are you the 20 second? There's two.
If you, if you look at the attachments that, that she, she
Yeah, they're this, oh, I see why, okay.
Because I might be able to.
I got it, I just, uh,
You got it?
Yeah. Boom. Nice and small up there.
That's a night test.
We'll get it.
I can read draft.
That's right, that's what I was gonna say, I can read the word draft.
Do I pass the eye test?
See, that's a great, now, see, I opened this, I can actually see this on my home.
Does that say world band?
Yeah.
The wrong window.
Yeah, you want to take that down as quickly as you can.
Right? It's kind of like at work when I receive a, you know, the email says confidential on it.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know, and I'm pretty much always changing them, you know, when I go outside, just, there it is.
So, um, one note on this draft that we're looking at for present company, it has not been reordered in any way.
Yeah.
So that'll be part of our discussion, but this is not in any specific order.
Yeah, you know, you know, this, only the two of you, please feel free to come on up, come on up, please.
I'm not seeing a thing.
And you know what? Do you want a copy?
Only if you have an extra, we can share it.
We'll share it.
We'll share it.
Thank you, Brendan.
I'm, I'm sure the reordering will be fine. Logical to the voters.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, much better, thank you.
All right, why don't we, because we did go through this last week, so, you know, I, I don't think the order is, is an issue. Caris, can we, as long as we have all the articles in here, we can change the order, is that right? Or do we have, we don't?
You can make it any order you want, up until the time you vote and sign the warrant.
Okay. So when we sign it to go to print, or when it, that, we can't change it once it's, okay. So, let's talk about the, there were, there were some in particular that ob, obviously, you know, I asked you, um, to, to be at the meeting so we could discuss it. Um, and I, I think the, the first one, for lack of a better risk, and I did not call Valley Tech, um, can we talk about that one first?
I, I think David had a conversation with Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Okay, can you talk about the, there is a, it's the vocational school that came to us, so you, had they, they, um, you know, beside their budget request, they have a, they have a debt situation that they want to suggest, so.
They, they, they're asking for $10 million to do HVAC repairs, as well as roof repairs for the, uh, the technical school. And the question had become, uh, what was our portion of that debt, which was 6.4, which, if you look at it over a period of time, it's a 20 year, it's going to be a 20-year note, it's, uh, $640,000.
So, the question I think was, do we have to vote as a debt exclusion and put it on the ballot, or are they going to put it in the assessment each year and we don't have to go to the ballot?
Okay, that, um,
So, so
I would say that it is in the assessment.
It could go either way. So I think they gave us the language to do it either way, I think.
That's right, they did. They gave you the, the option to do it either way, that you can, you can vote to authorize it, um, and then it would just become part of your assessment, however that assessment for capital projects is, is done, or you could do a separate debt exclusion and have it as excluded, and, and it would be its own separate debt exclusion. It would have to go to the ballot.
So, so, David, when, um, we, I thought it was a 25-year term, so I did quick math, was like 25,000 a year for a 25-year term, something like that. If it's 20 years, probably not more than 30, I would think, something like that. So that dollar amount, to me, kind of feels like we should be able to manage that through the budget process while doing a debt exclusion.
Yes, yeah, that was, well, you and I had that discussion yesterday.
So I think the, um, the, the, the article that's actually drafted on it, it's indicating we're probably going to do it through assessment, because I don't see anything has, with any language to borrowing within that article. I think it was the last article in the draft, Caris.
So I haven't completed my review of the draft, but the, in the, in the separate warrant language that Laura sent around
Yep.
from Blackstone Valley VOTAC, there are two different, two different motions.
Right, yeah, I thought one was, if we wanted to do the debt, you know, did a separate debt exclusion, the other one's if we wanted to have it included in the assessment.
Correct.
And the, as stated on the, the warrant, Caris, it's just authorizing, our town is authorizing a $10 million bond for the school, but it has no mention of, um, or any subsequent language around us doing any sort of debt exclusion. So I think this is the one that look, points towards, you know, handling the payment through the, the annual assessment?
Yes, but, but you have the option of doing it as a debt exclusion.
Yeah, so, so, Caris, the question, I would, a general question is, if we changed our mind next year, we could also go, go do a debt exclusion to cover the costs and change course. So I think whatever we do in this town meeting can be changed in future. I also think that we should, you know, sit down with Jody and Gene and folks, the finance team, to say, our thinking is X, which is assessment, do you agree? And what will your recommendation be? be?
Yeah, the, the, the issue is if we close the warrant tonight, we can't put the language.
Well, you can always reopen the warrant.
Or we don't close tonight, we close next week.
Next, yeah, I was gonna, actually, I was gonna recommend that.
Yeah.
Because we're still in the process of, of going through the articles and, and Charis is gonna be, you know, taking a fine-tooth comb and going through them and making corrections, you know, or scribners errors, or just, you know, the way a certain thing is phrased and that kind of thing.
Now, if I can, and if I can ask, what Laura had pointed out is, in her experience, you know, the, the vote we took initially to open the warrant also counted to close the warrant. But the way the language, I believe, is all we did was just say the deadline for people to submit.
Yeah.
Was last week.
You didn't open or close it.
We did open.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, we, you're right, we didn't vote to open it, but we did vote, we did make a motion to open the warrant with a, with a.
A deadline.
With a deadline.
Right. In, in years past too, Mike, I think we've always had a, at, at the time we're signing the warrant, we generally have a vote to close the warrant at that time as well.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Even if we've done it the first time, we're doing it the second time.
What did Laura say the cutoff was?
You didn't have to close it, which honestly, every community that I've worked in, we actually had a vote to close the warrant.
And the rest, and the rest of the story is that we could always vote to open and close anyways. The real, the real deadline is, you know, there is a deadline, there's a bylaw that says we have to get it delivered by mail. We tried to change that too, and there was some concern that some people still, you know, look at the hard copy, so.
I mean, we should circle back to, I mean, last week Laura said April 22nd was the deadline for printing. That seems really close though, to get it printed and mailed.
We are close.
I, I probably wouldn't want to let this go much past next week anyway.
No, I don't.
But we should confirm with Laura to the dates for printing and mailing, to make sure.
I think, I think she said the date, that was the date of mail, I think.
I, I don't, is it much harder, it seems to be much harder to revert from a debt exclusion back, right? So.
Yeah, you can go one way.
It's one way, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, because you'd have to.
I don't want to do another debt exclusion on this warrant.
I don't, that's my only one.
That's right.
Only one. You guys have $10 million around, I would have tapped into that. But what's the impact to the voters? I'm sorry, I'm just speaking out of turn.
Question. We're, we're paying, you know, $30,000 more a year as a town to, you know, roof and heat and cool this building.
I can get, the impact, does that impact the departmental budgets or services for that $30,000?
I would probably say no, because we would say, we would, if we do it this way, I would recommend that the board would earmark this payment out of the increase of levy that's gonna come next year anyway.
Okay.
And then, do you, you know what I mean?
Consider what we did with the library. And the other, other thing to keep in mind is, we, we have a covenant that's, I mean, I, I used to remember it when I was. I understand it. When I was on the, so in other words, of the 13 towns. We're stuck. Well, well, only if, well, we're not, but, but we're, in other words, if a majority of the towns, I don't think it's a majority, but there's a number. If, for instance, out of the 13 towns, if, if it's nine, I think if nine towns say yes, then the other, the other ones are in there. But there was, but there was a time where there was one, one time where there was a, a debt exclusion and some of the towns didn't participate. And what it meant was that they had less ability to send students to the school. So. That's good, yeah.
I think the other thing to note with this is this is a contingent article, so it's gonna be based on their ability to get some state grant money back from the school building grant process.
They got a good, they got a good staff there.
I think $10 million is the upper echelon, up to, expects that they're gonna be able to defray that cost, so.
I'm not opposed to helping the schools out BBT at hand, or, or I think most of the people aren't. It just, we need a position, I'd ask the select board to position that so it doesn't impact the big debt exclusion one we're gonna go for, not the debt exclusion, the senior center.
It would be helpful, I could answer some of these questions if perhaps David or someone else could get me a copy of the regional agreement for Blackstone Valley.
Sure.
Could take a look at that. And then I can answer some of the questions, but to, I think to Mike's point, Mike Goddard's point, you, you have to vote for the MSBA programs, you still have to vote and appropriate the entire amount. And then what's, and then it's a reimbursement, as with both state grants these days.
Okay. And just a small procedural question. If we get through the approval of the senior center, and this is the last article on the, and some of the motions to reconsider the senior center because we're spending 13.2 and we approve it, well, can that be reopened? Or is there a way to close that article at the time?
You tell them the senior center?
Yeah.
I believe any article could be.
Reopened.
Revisited, I think.
I'm just curious.
My suggestion is if you think that's gonna happen, to prepare a written something in advance, options, if you're gonna bring something to the floor after the fact.
No, I wasn't looking for options.
No, 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 I think.
I'm not looking for a different approach.
If it passes early in the meeting, but at the end of the meeting after this article gets voted, somebody could.
That means don't leave.
All right.
That's a problem with senior centers.
Let's.
We have 13 pots in the emerging.
What would, I mean, would it help to move this earlier?
Well, let's, before we, before we even get into that. Just, just think about it. Right now, we've got, we had questions about the Valley Tech. Right, that's, I'm sorry. So that, so we're gonna get that information to Charis, and she's gonna get back to us. But I think it's a consensus of the board, that we don't want to do a debt exclusion, we're just gonna, we're just gonna have a warrant article that's gonna.
Right.
Like we always do with Valley Tech, right?
I agree. I think discussion is gonna be important.
Right, and that.
How this is presented.
Yeah, so I guess I'd be in favor of it being earlier in the meeting to give room for that discussion, so that, so that it doesn't feel like we're like, it's a surprise at the end.
We're not fatigued.
Right. Well, right, because if, people might see that $10 million and jump to the wrong conclusion.
Yeah.
It's an alarming number.
Yes.
Doesn't make sense to put, is, doesn't make sense to put numbers like the Menden specific numbers in the article? Can we do that?
Well, we would do that in the discussion.
Right.
I think we can, you know, I, I, I think. But, you know, we, we put the article and then it's just important to, and of course, you know, Dr. Fitz will be there.
Right.
To stand up and he'll explain.
Sure.
You know, his, his rationale for what's going on and what it really means to Menden, you know.
So, I mean, can the article say Menden's share in, like, Menden's share of this?
I, I don't, I, I think we have to vote the whole amount, but I, I don't know. I, I would assume we can say whatever we want, as long as we don't change the, the intent of the article, right?
I think we have to authorize BBT to borrow up to $10 million for this project. Now, when we speak to it.
Right, right.
We can provide more of Menden's assistance.
In other words, we, we, as, as one of the 13 towns responsible, you know, within the agreement.
I think Dr. Fitzpatrick will speak to that immediately.
Well, that's, right, that's.
He came out immediately in his email saying, that means 6.5% to you, like, because I saw that $10 million, I go, yikes.
Right.
Yeah, you, that's all part of the discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So, so we'll revisit, you could revisit that next week. The next thing I, I know, Anne Mazur, I know you're, you're on the call, you're on the, on the, on the meeting, on the teams meeting. And you had a couple of articles, you have some, you actually have a few moving parts on this warrant that you wanted to discuss. So, hi Anne, how are you?
Good.
So let's talk about your, on this draft, what articles, were you adding some, or were you just talking about numbers for the ones that are already on here?
I think more numbers for some that are on here. Let's see, the, well, the one for the Fair Road property, which I think is at the end of the warrant.
It's 30.
30?
30. Yeah, Charis helped rewrite that. And the changes, so I don't know if the changes are on there. No.
No.
But anyways, I can give that, I guess, send it to Laura, she'll, she'll have them on there. But the 500,000, I want to change to 1 million. Only, in April, the Community Preservation Committee is gonna pick the exact amount, but I want to put down 1 million just so we have the flexibility, that's all. But 500 is our goal.
So this is Article 30, the CPC one about, it says 1.8 million.
Yeah, well, that, it's, we're, the total cost will be that, but we're writing a grant and we're looking.
Oh, right, okay.
At two other sources of funding, so we're aiming towards 500,000 out of CPA funds.
Are those two other, those two other sources, are they within CPA accounts?
No, it would be the Nature Conservancy and Audubon.
Right, because it says here, well, I know that's the one in this, in this draft print that says, so, with the approval of the select board to transfer the sum of 1.8 million from CPA accounts for the purpose of purchasing a permanent conservation restriction for conservation. So you've already rewritten this article, is that right, you and?
Well, yes, Charis did. The reason you have to put down the 1.8 million is because the land grant's a reimbursement grant, so you're supposed to put the full amount in.
You have to, just like we talked about with the MSBA, you have to authorize the full amount, and then you get reimbursed. So the amount that the CPA will actually be paying, assuming they get the grant, will be less, but you, you still have to authorize the full amount.
So, but the, it's a difference between, so, but authorizing it and transferring it are two different things, isn't it?
Yes.
Because it says here, yeah, we'll vote to, see if the town will, to transfer and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to transfer the sum. And I'm thinking, you know, we're, the town's authorizing us to do the whole 1.8, but we're not gonna transfer our 1.8 because some of it's coming from sources outside of the town, right?
Anne, does it get, is it a reimbursement? Do you have to pay out the 1.8 and get money back? Or do they put their share of the money up?
I, I, I need to clarify that, that the grant we're going for is 500,000. And so I'm assuming really it's 1 million that they would want us to put up, but I'm not sure on that.
1.3 million. But if it's 1.8, then that's, then, then you're gonna get a million, then that's one, or, or a half, we're gonna have to put up 1.3. And then again, that would be out of CPA?
Yes. I mean, any of the money that would be set aside would be CPA, but all of it would not be spent though. And I, I don't, I'm hoping, I, I assume that in the motion we're gonna clarify exactly, you know, you know, how much CPA money's gonna be spent and where the other funding is coming from.
Well, again, I, I think we should talk about that, Anne, because I think you've got to put out the, I think you have to authorize and allow transfer of the full amount, but it won't actually be spent or it will be reimbursed.
Okay.
We just need to know the answer on that, on that portion.
Okay.
And then we can put together a motion.
Okay.
Well, and, and Anne, you've got two or three different sources that are gonna help defray the cost of the 1.8, I believe, if I remember.
Yeah, three sources actually.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're working on that still.
Right. So the, 1.8's the maximum out of CPA, and it might actually be transferred, and then we might re, reimburse, monies might come back into CPA accounts if these grants or other sources come, come to fruition. Fair?
Yeah, I.
Worth case scenario.
It's up to the amount of 1.8 million.
Yeah. Well, the plan is not to spend 1.8 million.
It just makes it complicated to discuss.
Yeah, yeah. And if the grant, so say worst happens, the grant doesn't come through, do we have the funding in the CPA accounts to handle the full 1.8 that's authorized?
Well, the 1 million, the reason I wanted to set by, set aside 1 million is if the land grant possibly didn't come through.
Okay.
Or some, or one of the other ones. But by the time in April that the Community Preservation Committee will be voting on the dollar amount, we should know about the Nature Conservancy and Audubon.
Okay.
Land grant, we won't know till after the town meeting.
So that's not a done deal yet.
Right, we're still going through the process of, you know, applying for the funding from those organizations.
Can, can it say something like the sum of, like, up to, to?
That's a Charis question, you know?
Yeah, Anne, let's have a, let's, let's circle back. If you can get some more information from the grantors about what the process actually is, then we can tweak the language.
Okay.
And, and Anne, just back to Brendan's question, there's a lot of CP, CPA articles on this warrant. So if, you know, I know we don't want to spend 1.8, but can we, does CPA have the funds to cover 1.8 if we were to choose to do that? That's sort of the question.
Yes, CPA has the funds to put 1.8 in, but that is not the goal.
But I mean.
It's not the goal to spend as much as you have.
But CPA has the funds for all of the articles.
Including all the other.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's like 2.8 or 3.
Right, but I mean, just to clarify for.
Well, we're not gonna get rid of the recreation article, I'll say that right now.
Put it anywhere.
Put it anywhere.
The other change in the dollar amount is in Article 31, it would be more like 100,000. Because we have to, if, if we move forward, we have to do surveying, a title search and all that.
Is this a parcel that is adjacent to the parcels where you're buying the restriction?
Yes.
All right, is there anything else on the warrant that we need to discuss?
See, where's the affordable housing one on the CPA? What number is that?
29.
29, and the, yeah, okay, that looks good. Yep, it looks good. And I'll clarify the 30 with Charis, so I'll have something more specific, better, soon.
Senior Center would be the other topic.
About the, for the warrant.
For the warrant.
Yeah, okay, well, let's talk about that.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Anne.
Thanks, Anne.
So last week, we talked a lot about the different ways we might go about recapturing our, keeping our level debt service, the 343. It's gonna, it's actually a capital exclusion to proposition two and a half, so it's like a one-year override. That's how I look at it.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a perfect explanation.
So we had talked about, it has, you have to cite the capital project, we talked about it quite a bit last week, is it, you know. And where I've landed, and this is more of a recommendation for discussion, is I just want to go all in on senior, senior and community center, just say that is the capital project, that is what we're looking to capture the 343 for, and keep it very binary for the voters, saying, you've got the senior center, if you approve that, then you're going to, we suggest you approve this defraying of cost. You know, I think Phil and team will have the numbers to demonstrate what the impact is. If the senior center doesn't pass, then we wouldn't move forward with it, and we would just, our level, our debt service would actually go down for a year because we won't capture that debt, which is, you know, financially speaking, it's a good practice to maintain level debt. But I just feel like it's too, getting too complicated, and we might get a result we don't want. So I was thinking, senior center on both, if we lose the debt for a year, we lose the debt for a year, because we know next year, we're gonna get more capital requests coming, large ones coming from most likely the school.
And all of our other financial pieces, we, we've got other alternate ways to fund all of that, right?
Yeah, so I just think it's, it's cleaner, it's simpler in terms of the discussion on the floor.
It makes the discussion much easier.
Yeah, spoke, spoke with Charis about it, I spoke to our accountant, town accountant about it. I'll speak for Erickson's, Charis in the home, but I think they generally thought it's probably cleaner, a better way to approach it, that you're not, you're not giving anybody any idea where it could be spent.
Right, right.
Senior center, defray the cost, and then that supports the, the numbers you have in your discussion.
I think, I actually think that doing it this way makes it easier to support the senior center.
Right, yeah, I mean, my concern was that if we had the option B, that it would be, I don't know, like, just a competition in a way that was not productive.
You don't want to muddy the waters in this, in my mind.
Right.
So I agree with all this, I just want to know what everybody, what's the downside on having to, like, re-up on debt exclusion next year?
Well, what, well, I.
Under the best practice.
Well, I'll tell you what happens. Well, I'll tell you what happens. What, what happens is, everybody gets their next tax bill and they're happy.
Because it goes, because it goes down.
And then what happens is, the next year, when we do incur the debt again.
Goes up.
It goes up.
All right, so politics. But when it goes up, it'll be a netted amount. You can make that same case because, you know, you've dropped it this year and next year it could have been this much higher, but.
This is all depending on the quality of our discussion.
Yeah.
It's really, it's quality of discussion, presentation of it.
All right, okay. Anything else to do with, and you're going to, you're going to, we're going to look, look to vote to close the warrant later. We're not going to worry about that now. Just real quick, the ordering of the warrant articles, I sent you everybody a document with the proposed ordering. Elena has even suggested a change to it just in the last conversation.
Well, I was going to, I was going to suggest that you touch base with your, with your, we touched base with the town moderator as well, since he's going to be walking everybody through it to get his feedback on it as well. And, and I would also look for, for Ellen's input too, because she's the other one sitting up there. She has a lot of good sense about how it, you know, how it's going to play. And we don't have to, the point is, we don't have to discuss it, finish discussing it now.
There might be too many cooks in the kitchen. This is just about grouping senior center. And then I separated BBT to the back just because I wanted it separate, but, you know.
That's a good call.
No, I mean, that, that makes sense. I guess, well, I guess Phil brought up that question of like, is somebody going to try to reopen an earlier question?
It happened on one of the school votes a long time ago.
That's going to happen.
Reconsideration.
But only if, but only if you voted, only if you voted in favor of it. The only people that can vote for reconsideration.
The noes.
Are the, are the.
Yeses.
The yeses.
The yeses.
Yeah, the noes can't, if you voted, and, and what's interesting is, you know, how do you know that? Well, now we do. Because everybody has a clicker number and all the numbers are recorded. So we can actually verify if they were a yes or a no, so.
So I'll circle back with Ellen and Tom, get their feedback on this. I'd ask each of you to kind of look at this and see if it makes sense to you.
The sort order?
Yeah, just got, just laid it out in terms of.
I mean, some of it, some of it, I think everything up the front with the consent calendar, but, but like you said, the big thing is, where do we put the, where do we put the, put the senior center on here, right?
I want to push it up as high as possible. It starts at 18.
That's my suggestion.
I don't know if this, except I think consent calendar, so if there's 1 through 17, if there are things that you think are not, don't need to be put together, we do them a little further, but. And then in terms of the, Karis, I'll forward, you saw a document for the article order I sent to Laura. I added draft warrant language for the exclude, capital exclusion to that document. So I'll send that back to you if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, because I don't think I got the reordering that you sent to her. I haven't gotten anything on the warrant since yesterday before we talked.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you would send that over, that would be great. I mean, you know, standard practice, stick the, do the financial articles first, do zoning and any other bylaw changes, do CPC, and then do citizens petitions and anything else at the end.
Yeah, I mean, I grouped all the zoning and all the CPC together because Anne's were out.
That's rocking.
That's great.
And we got to add one.
All right, yeah, we're going to add one for, put free cash, move whatever free cash is left into FinCom Reserve. Because if we don't spend it, it's just going to go back down to free cash next year anyways.
Correct.
You know, do that in the fall, so. All right, if, nothing else on the warrant for now? All right, let's, let's talk about ballot language. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're all, do we need, do we need Karis for the ballot language or not?
I haven't, I haven't seen the ballot language yet.
There's a standard for the debt exclusion. There's a standard form for the ballot language. I assume Ellen has it. If she doesn't, she should reach out to me in the ELS publications. But there is really no, there's not wiggle room allowed in the debt exclusion ballot language. So if, so that's pretty much all I got to say on that.
There will be, there will be two, right? Just, so I understand. So one is, I mean, so there's the, the short-term debt exclusion and then the.
No, it's just the one.
Oh.
So the 343 is actually going to be, that's like an override.
That one doesn't need a ballot question?
No, that's just going to be raising our taxes one time.
Oh, okay.
For one year, and then it'll go back down.
Okay, I thought that one needed a ballot question too.
I did too, until I didn't.
Okay, okay, all right.
No, no, I mean, that's, that's why I was talking to Erickson many times and he finally knocked it through my head. It's like, oh, this is a 2 and 1/2 override. He goes, yes. I'm like, okay, got it.
Yeah, but doesn't a 2 and 1/2 override need the ballot vote too?
Oh.
Yeah, maybe this is our question for Karis, like, how many questions do we need?
If it's an override, it needs a, it needs a vote.
It's override, it needs a ballot, but there may be a one-time debt exclusion, maybe for one, it may be if it's only one year.
Right, so, well, so then it's, right, two ballot questions, right? One, one for the 13 million for the senior center and then one for the, right. So, and one is the sort of long-term.
And again, I guess the next question is, you know, why are we even doing a separate debt exclusion for one year? I mean, why are we not just putting the whole thing?
And why not fold it all in together? Is there a timing issue that the short-term one is faster to get in?
Yes.
Is that, is that what it is?
I, no, I mean, I think, I think it was just more of a practice of keeping level debt service.
Debt service.
Yeah, and I'm not, and again, I would say that I'm not certain that, that there's any value to that. When it comes to, in other words, if we're, if we're all in for the senior center, and I assume we're all in for the senior center. We've got a, we've got a certain amount of debt that we're going to hit. Why have two different votes and just put it all in one and we don't worry about levels? So we just, never mind one-year debt exclusions, because we're, what's, what's the point? I mean, we're just going to go for one ballot question, one vote, this is for the senior center, sink or swim, up or down, and that's what we do.
Because otherwise, people are going to get confused. They're not going to know which one to vote for. And so then people will vote for neither because they don't, if they don't understand.
I mean, the original, the original conversation was that we were going to, we had other things to do with that one-year debt exclusion. And then it morphed into, well, we're going to put it on the senior center, but if that doesn't pass, then we'll switch to something else. And we said, well, that's too confusing. It, my, my thought is that, and then plus for the, for the townspeople, I think, I think we should, if we're going to do the senior center, then we just put the debt for the senior center on there. And that's it. We don't have a second, you know, one-year debt exclusion, you know, override. We just do it, just the senior center.
So then for the first year, their net is less than it would have been if you did the one-year and the senior center?
Yeah.
So the impact, it's not as much as it would be.
Yeah.
So then, and then there would only be one ballot question.
One ballot question.
I mean, I don't know if there are other ballot questions, but only one ballot question relating to.
I would defer on this. I want, I want, I want more people to weigh in on it.
Okay.
Well, we have, we have. No, only because I just think what I heard was the net is not going to be as great. The net benefit would not be as, unless we borrow less.
I don't, I think what it, what, I'm not sure it would be, I don't know if it would necessarily be less or, but what it comes down to is, I, I think when you're talking about incurring debt, I think one big, one big vote for the year is enough. I don't think.
It's the same amount of debt.
Yeah.
Right.
It's just shuffling portions of it.
Well, actually, well, the, well, the 343, is that the number? Well, that's, that's supposed to be for one year, right? So if that's going to be to pay for the senior center, and then we're doing another vote for a 20-year debt exclusion for the senior center, I don't get the point. It's almost like, why do we do a one-year? Why don't we just, you know, unless, unless some of the debt's not going to start till next year and we need this 343 this year.
That's where we'd be managing. 343 would get things started.
Get it started.
I don't think they'd stop doing the longer-term debt until like the spring of next year.
Well, then the question is, can.
Bond anticipation notes.
Well, that's what I mean.
The boss was talking about doing that too.
Yeah, well, that's why I don't, I'm not sure there's any, I'm not sure the wisdom of taking the two votes and doing the two. I, I think you just.
The two votes does seem nuts, I think.
I think you just do one and then you do the bond anticipation note that you need, you know, to, to get things started.
As a tax, as a taxpayer, this first year, the senior center impact to you would be?
I don't know. I'm going to defer to the finance, the financial team to do this, you know?
If I.
I think, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, but I'm.
But I want to understand the impact.
Yeah, that's my impact piece of, all this is nice where we put it, but the impact of it, if I'm paying 100 bucks for this senior center, oh, by the way, you don't have to pay 30 because your bill's not going to go up 100 bucks this year.
It's going to go up 30, right.
It's going to go up 70.
It's going to go up 70, because 30's coming off.
30's coming off. And that's what we need to explain to the voters.
That's 80, you know, I don't know how many taxpayers we have, but if we estimate it at 4,000 taxpayers, it would be 85. And if you keep dropping it down, it keeps dropping down. So, yeah, it's a small amount, but it's an amount.
I think.
What did I notice? Didn't we come up with a number of, it's going to be about 3, 350 a year?
We did, we did, based on Jody's predictions. We said the average home being 500,000 because we thought that a lot of the seniors would have a value of a home less than that. So we, we've been telling them approximately between 300, 25, 350, depending. Jody was working on those numbers for us.
That's the message we need. Whatever it is, we just need to tell the impact. But we need to, we need to also get it through the ballot and the vote simplest way possible. Two questions would confuse me.
Every way you look at it, I, I understand the idea of keeping your debt service level. But every way you look at it, I'm thinking about, I've stood up in front of town meeting a lot of times, right, and have talked a lot of times about it. And my thought is that if we only, I don't want to have to explain multiple articles and multiple votes. And if somebody can explain to me a better idea, but if we're all in for the senior center, I think we should, you know, and I think, I think it, it, it's easy for everybody to understand too.
Yeah, we're all in at 13, too.
But I think, like Mike said, let's defer and see, let's find out what the financial team says.
I'm not sure how the math doesn't work. We're just talking about the mechanism to get it there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because if we do nothing, we drop 343 in our debt service, right?
Right, so if, if the senior center doesn't pass, then, and we don't have this.
So I don't know how that doesn't net out against the 13.2.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I, I think it's easier to explain that part, part of the cost is going to be offset by debt coming off than it is to explain.
That is a question that people have asked.
Because that's what I'm going to, because that, if, if, if I, yeah, if we do it this way, I find it very easy to just come up and make that point.
And it does, it's an argument for it being this year. You know, because that debt is coming off this year. I mean, if it's sort of bundled together, because it's, right then, we don't have that because we'll just be edging back up with the debt.
We're always going to be edging up.
And it is a senior and community center.
Yes, we need to.
Just keep getting that message out, senior and.
That's it, right, yeah. All right, any other, any other thing for, for, for council? I know this is your second meeting tonight, so thank you, Karis. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everybody. Take care.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Aye.
Night.
What do we need to discuss about our fund allocations?
Nothing.
I thought we did with, with.
I've just.
I have notes for it, so.
Right, and you talk, tell us about your, your seminars and the, and the earmarks and.
Okay. I have been talking to the congressman's office and with Phil's help today, basically did all of the narrative that we needed to submit the application for the earmark. I talked to the congressman's office about certain questions I had about getting support letters and whether or not we could include copies of the conceptual drawings and all of those kinds of things. And she said, no, we're not, you're not at that level. But they do, they already have 14 applications and, and the closes Friday at 1:00. It's a very competitive program. We talked about submitting the total 13 million as a project, knowing that they probably won't give you 13 million dollars. But any amount that we did get to help build the building and, and make it a reality is, is just less money that we'll have to provide for in the end. So Jill and his brother-in-law worked yesterday morning.
Yeah, towns person, Mike Rubin, he's the principal down in Uxbridge. But he goes after grants constantly. I said, I knew, you came up with this scheme at the end of last week. So I said, okay, Mike, you do this stuff. And we worked on it together. So he did a lot of the, and he was an English major in his past life, so.
Yeah, he writes really well.
Oh, he's a fine writer. That's why I went there.
So we, so we have pretty much all of that one done. Today, I also spoke to Jenner in the congressperson's office. And we talked about the water project, because we've been feeding them the executive summaries from Woodward and Curran, telling them basically what it is that we're trying to do, why we're trying to develop a water source. And I also talked a little bit to Woodward and Curran about the application. The, and I talked to Jack also. So tomorrow, that part of it, we're going to be, Jack and I will probably getting together and putting together the second application. The water application is, is a program that requires a 20% match. The program is $57 million. You know, the odds of getting funded for $57 million, once again, is, you know, not very good, you know? But if you get some portion of it, if you get 2 million, then you know you're going to have to ante up and give 400,000 to, to get the money, so.
But there is, but there is a state office for the matching money that we were told. If, if that ever happens, that the state, state has a fund and they have an office set up so that, because.
That was to Quentin, didn't you talk about him?
Yeah, Quentin Palfrey, because the, the conversation was that the governor feels like we can't afford to miss it. Because any money we get is money the state gets. And if we got that kind of grant ability, you know, to do that kind of infrastructure, that the state would pony up their piece, the, the, the grant piece so we can make it happen, so.
So the other piece of this is that the Congress, the Congress has their own program for earmarks. The Senate also has their own program. So they recommend, because I attended a Zoom seminar, that we submit both products, both projects to both the congressman and to the Senate, Senator Markey. Senator Markey works very closely with Senator Warren. They build consensus as to which projects they want to see get pushed forward. And so, you know, both of them will be submitted. The Senate portal is not open. The Congress's portal for the, is open until Friday at 1:00. So, and, and, like I said, I've had a whole bunch of questions and she answered most of those questions today. And like I said, we got one done and second one will be done in time for Friday, so. That's all I got.
That's great.
Thank you, David. And. Thank you, Phil.
Phil, thank you for, for your efforts involved.
Oh, God, you're awesome.
It's all part of the, all part of getting things done for the, whatever, you know?
All right.
We all live here.
If we don't have anything else, I guess we're just going to move into executive session.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Phil.
I trust my ordering to you, Mike.
Jenna, Jenna, you.
Yeah, can you hear me, Mike?
Oh, great. I didn't, I didn't realize you were going to make it, so that's terrific.
I had to, it was my child's birthday, so I had to be involved in that first, but yes, here I am.
All right, that's great. So we can, we can keep you around for the executive session for this to talk about the contract.
So I moved to enter into executive session, purpose two, MGL 30A, 21A2 to contact, to get off strategy sessions for, in preparation for negotiations, the finance.
Second, all right, motion made in second, roll call vote, Morally aye.
Ruko's aye.
Cooter aye? And we will not be returning to active session. We will close from executive session. And Jennifer, I will drop you into another room in just a second.
Okay, great, thanks.
Drop us in, too.
You as well.